We are live. See the camera shot, just FYI, your presentation is not going out because your computer has HTTP set up. I don't know how to fix that.
Is it in the agenda packet?
No, but it will send it to me.
They can see this.
Our apologies to the people viewing.
They should appreciate it's really good.
It's really great, I promise.
So, welcome to the City Council Study Session Meeting of Tuesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty four. We have three items on the agenda, the first of these, we're gonna do them out of order. The first of these is a presentation from Norman Arts Council regarding the economic and social impact of Norman's nonprofit arts and culture sector.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure, how long of a time do I have to present? I was told forty minutes.
Okay, that's about right.
Forty minutes, I'll try to be. I'll, I'll try. I'll cut some corners. Good evening, everyone, I'm really glad to be here today to share this very important study that was carried out in the United States last year. The official title of the study is Arts and Economic Prosperity Study VI, and I will explain why VI as we move on. It was initiated by Americans for the Arts, a national nonprofit organization on federal level, and on local level, the study was carried out by three hundred seventy-three organizations across the United States, including Norman Arts Council. And my goal today is to focus on the results of the study. However, I will also have to explain some of the, some of the methodology part of it, but I promise I will not take too much of your time in that regard. So, what are we talking about here? And first, let me establish the focus and scope of the study. So, what was the major objective? And the overarching goal of the study was to establish the social and economic role that nonprofit arts and culture sector exerts nationally as well as locally. Here we are looking at two particular impacts that were gorged, so what, what were they? The, the very first measure that was gorged was was social impact. And in Arts and Economic Prosperity Studies VI, social impact refers to the effects that the nonprofit arts and culture sector has on the well-being of individuals and their community, such as social connections, community pride and identity, physical and emotional health, and lastly, community livability. So, these were the major data points that were measured in, in this particular impact. The second impact that was measured was economic impact. And economic impact can be defined in different ways according to the scope and focus of the study. For this particular project or study, economic impact is defined as the following measures. The first one is jobs, as a total figure of people employed, full-time, part-time, also seasonal employment jobs. The second one is resident household income, and that includes salaries, wages, and entrepreneurial, entrepreneurial income paid to residents. And it, and it is the money individuals earn personally and then use to pay for food, mortgages, and other living expenses. And the third one was tax revenue to local, state, and federal governments, including revenues, revenue from taxes, for example, income, property, or sales tax, as well as funds from licenses, filing fees, and as, other similar sources. So, these were the two major, major measures in, in this study. It is also essential at the very beginning to establish the geographic scope. AEP VI, that's the abbreviation for Arts and Economic Prosperity Study VI, is the largest and most comprehensive study of its kind ever conducted. And as I said, it, it comprised three hundred seventy-three study regions in all fifty states and Puerto Rico, including small rural to large urban communities and populations ranging from four thousand people up to four million. On the map, I have circled Norman Arts Council, or, or Norman. And Norman Arts Council was one of the research partners of the Americans for the Arts, representing the city of Norman, Oklahoma, with population of one hundred twenty-nine thousand six hundred twenty-seven people. And what I need to say that in the state of Oklahoma, we were the only ones participating in the study, which of course was great and benefited greatly. But on the other hand, the fact that NAC was the only organization represented in the state implied also certain challenges, and I'm going to talk about that later if, if time, if time permits. As you can see on the screen, these are national, national numbers represented there. In total, sixteen thousand three hundred ninety-nine nonprofit organizations participated. Again, this is national data, and two hundred twenty-four thousand six hundred seventy-seven attendees in total were surveyed in the audience survey, again, nationally. And what needs to be emphasized is that AEP study has its history dating back to nineteen ninety-four, and since then, the study has been carried out every five years. And again, since then, AEP VI has grown tenfold. And this was the second time that the Norman Arts Council participated in, in, in this study. So, expanding on what I said about the national importance of the study, the next question is what is the local importance of the AEP VI? And there are three factors that, that I would like to emphasize and that are important when talking about the results. And the first one is that the study is focused. It's focused on a specific cohort, namely, the city of Norman. The, the second important factor is that it is real, it represents real numbers. The results are not an extrapolation or prediction made from study done elsewhere. And the, the third one is that it is relevant, relevant, relevant to the existing nonprofit arts and culture ecosystem, namely, the results represent local organizations' work and local organizations' input, output, and finally, impact. So, why it is important to emphasize these three factors? The significance is in, is in that that the study is not attempting to make a statistical generalization of a subset or a sample that was studied outside the community. The city of Norman, AEP VI mirrors the characteristics of a specific field of cultural production or a specific arts and culture ecosystem here in Norman. And the data are unique, representing the social and economic foot, footprint of nonprofit organizations in, in Norman. So, how, how it was achieved? First, only nonprofit and municipal arts and cultural organizations are included or were included. No, no for-profit entertainment businesses or no individual artists were part of the study. They are all important to the cultural ecology. However, in, in, in the scope of this study, they just, they, they sat outside, so they, they were not a part of the scope. So, let me move on. Oh, I didn't interpret what you saw on the screen. So, this is, this is local data, and I will, I will get back to it, just to, just to have, have a snapshot that thirty-three nonprofit organizations participated in, in Norman. Indeed, we had forty-seven identified, thirty-three participated, thirty-one finished the, the, the study. And in total, we surveyed one thousand two hundred nineteen attendees. And I will explain how the surveying was done in, in a short moment. So, just a moment ago, I stated that the goal of the study was to measure the impact of nonprofit sector, both the national and local economies. And here, the question may be, why just nonprofits? And the answer is because government and philanthropic dollars are typically directed to these organizations. And also, it is appropriate to ask beyond quality of life, what is the return investment of that investment? And to answer the question, let's have a quick glimpse at the national, national results, representing the entire arts and culture nonprofit sector here in the United States. Considering the detrimental COVID effect to nonprofit culture sector, by every measure, the results were impressive or are impressive. Nationally, the sector generated one hundred fifty-one point seven billion dollars of economic activity in twenty twenty-two. And of those, seventy-three point three billion dollars were in spending by arts and culture organizations, and additional seventy-eight point four billion dollars in event-related expenditures by their audiences. So, what was the impact of this economic activity? And here we are going back to the three economic impact data points that I emphasized at the very beginning. First, it supported two point six million jobs. Second, it provided one hundred one billion in personal income to residents. And third, it generated twenty-nine point one billion dollars in tax revenue to local, state, and federal governments. So, here, perhaps, the, the major takeaway in this national context is that besides the cultural and spiritual benefits, the arts and culture have a measurable economic impact, even in the smallest, smallest communities. So, arts and culture nonprofit organizations are good business citizens, very effective cultural ambassadors, and they are invaluable community nurturers, facilitating new connections between people and strengthening old ties.
The nature of those two point six million jobs, those part-time jobs, are they?
It is full-time, part-time, and, and also the seasonal. Now, we, I will, I will focus mostly from, from, from here and, and, and on, on local, all local data. The timeframe of the AEP VI study was one full year. And the data collection process consisted of two steps. The first one was collection of intersector audience surveys. And here, just I need to provide, provide this very short description, what is an intercept survey? It is important to note that an intercept survey is a type of research method used to gather onsite feedback from target audiences. It is a type of methodology that can provide accurate and invaluable, in the moment, data from respondents. And this initial surveying process, as I said, lasted for a full year, starting on, on, on May first of twenty twenty-two, and it was going through July, July the first of twenty twenty-three. The, the seconds, and, and, and in this, in, in, in this very first stage, as I said, we collected one thousand two hundred nineteen, nineteen surveys. Our requirement was eight hundred, we went over that, which, which really was great. And the second, the second step was organizational surveys, collecting budget and annual attendance data of each participating organization. And this portion of the study lasted from the end of the February, of, on the end of February twenty twenty-three, and lasted till the very beginning of August of twenty twenty-three. It was five full months. And again, as I said, in total, forty-nine nonprofit organizations were selected, and thirty-one participated and, and finished in both rounds of, of surveys, bringing our response rate to sixty-three, which is a very good and reliable rate. And here, I'm referring to, to organizational surveys. Again, on the screen, you can see the overall representation of the fabric of audiences, of audiences attending events in Norman during the study year, which was half twenty twenty-two and half twenty twenty-three. And the Audience Intercept Survey instrument allowed respondents to choose multiple racial and ethnic categories. Therefore, the sum of the results for the individual categories may exceed hundred, hundred percent. But I think it's a very good representation of, of, of the, of the fabric of the community that, that was surveyed at the time. The definition of nonprofits, nonprofit arts and culture sector in AEP VI is based on the National Taxonomy of Exempt Entity Coding System as a guideline. And the NTEE system is developed by the National Center for Charitable Statistics at the Urban Institute. And it was a definitive classification system for nonprofit organizations recognized as tax-exempt by the Internal Revenue Code. And this system divides the entire universe of nonprofit organizations into ten major categories, including arts, culture, and humanities as one of the categories. So, the nonprofit organizations representing subtypes under this category were eligible to participate in the study. And here, we are really talking about wide range of organizations by type that were represented, and they are festivals, performing arts and visual arts organizations, history and heritage centers, public art programs, museums, community programs, living collections, and more. And in case of Norman, fourteen organization types are represented, and you can see them on the, on the screen. And I would say it's a rather diverse group of organizations representing the sector. Also, in my analysis, I, I looked at the organizations by discipline, and here you can see twelve disciplines. And again, that really represents a, a diverse group of organizations. Now, let's have a look at the data. And, and again, this is, this is the local data that we are talking about. During fiscal year of twenty twenty-two, spending by both the city of Norman's nonprofit arts and culture organizations and their audiences totaled thirty-six point one million dollars. And remember that here, the total economic activity that I am going to present is composed of two figures. One is spending, or the first one is spending by nonprofit arts and culture organizations. And the second one is the eventuated spending by their audiences. That's why there were also two steps of surveying. One was the attendees of the events, and another one was organizations that really allowed us to get this data. Nonprofit arts and culture organizations spent an estimated eleven point six million dollars in twenty twenty-two. And again, if I can say so, this is a filibuster. We appreciate the beauty of the arts, but many people still do not realize that arts organizations are also businesses. They employ people locally, purchase goods and services within the community. They are members of the chambers of commerce, and they are involved in the marketing and promotion of their city. Arts organizations are good business citizens, and they are also good cultural ambassadors. Unlike most industries, the arts generate significant amounts of event-related spending. And here we are talking about purchasing meals, lodging, retail shopping, transportation, also babysitting, you really name it. This generates significant revenue to local merchants. As you can see, during twenty twenty-two, eventuated spending by their audiences comprised twenty-four point five million dollars. Again, the study sends a strong signal that even in the aftermath of COVID-nineteen pandemic and the resulting recession, the nonprofit arts and culture sector is a formidable industry. Now, the big question is, what is the economic impact of, of this spending? Again, we have to focus on audiences and organizations. So, this spending, eleven million, eleven point six million dollars by nonprofit arts and culture organizations and additional twenty-four point five million dollars in eventuated spending by their audiences supported five hundred ninety-six jobs, generated twenty-one point three million dollars in household income for local residents, and delivered six point four million dollars in tax revenues to local, state, and federal, federal governments. I have also data points for, or, or data for each specific data point. And, and the first one is household income. So, household income is the money earned and received by individuals in the study region as a result of cohort, as a result of the economic activity by organizations, and second, by audiences. And it is what we earn to make a living and then use to pay our bills, rent, utilities. The, the other impact that I, I emphasized at the very beginning is jobs. Jobs is a figure of total people employed, full-time, part-time, and seasonal, seasonal employment. Again, this data was acquired from, from the organizational surveys. It was very detailed, and, and, and organizations, thirty-one that, that we have provided it. So, arts organizations employ more than just artists, curators, musicians, or dancers. They also pay builders, plumbers, accountants, printers, and occupations spanning many industries. These jobs are also the result of audience spending, not just organizational spending. So, again, an important takeaway regarding this impact is that because arts organizations are strongly rooted in their community, these are jobs that necessarily remain local and cannot be shipped overseas. And even in a global economy, arts remain local employers. And I think that's a very important takeaway from this impact point. The last one is tax, tax revenues. The nonprofit arts and culture industry generates significant revenues to local, state, and federal governments. And nonprofit organizations themselves are exempt from many federal and state taxes. So, how can they generate tax revenue? Like all employers, they pay payroll taxes, for example, Social Security, Medicare, and their employees pay income taxes on their personal earnings. In addition, other local businesses are likely to pay taxes on goods they sell and services they provide to nonprofit organizations. So, in the city of Norman, spending by nonprofits, nonprofit arts and culture organizations generated a total of three point nine million in tax, in tax revenues, and additional two point five by, by audiences, or audience spending. Let me provide a quick comparison from, from the previous study. I said that, that Norman Arts Council did participate in, in, in this study five years back. And in regard to organizational spending, there is not much difference. And here, you have to pay attention to the, to the blue data points. The pink data points represent a comparison with similar study regions by population. And you can see that from twenty, in twenty twenty-two compared to twenty fifteen, really, in terms of, of organizational spending, there is almost no difference. Now, if we look at the, at the direct expenditures by audiences, again, we have to pay attention to the blue data points. We see that, that, that there was a very, a very strong COVID effect because the study was carried out right after COVID. And we can see that, and that's a national, national trend, that, that, that overall, the, the expenditures dropped. And even though after COVID, the national data shows that, that the consumer spending is starting to increase, still, if we look at particularly to arts and culture sector, that, that increase was very, very slow. And during twenty twenty-two, we could still see that there was a dip when compared to twenty twenty fifteen. So, here is perhaps some data that shows that, that dip. And here, you have to look at the, at the, at the blue data, data line, and it focuses on live entertainment, including sports. You can see the COVID effect. And again, in twenty twenty-two, you see that it is going up, but truly, it is, it was still below what it was in twenty twenty fifteen. And again, as I said, compared to, to overall spending, or, or customer spending nationally, that trend was going very quickly up. But if we, if we focus at, at that specific arts and culture sector, it, you can see the data is, is below. So, now, what I would like to, like to focus on, moving on, is the, is the question, how can a dollar be respent? And the question of the ripple effect. Because here we are focusing on direct impact of, or, or direct spending by arts organizations and attendees to those organizations. But we have to take into consideration that there is that ripple effect, that, that direct spending creates indirect impact and induced impact. And we saw that through jobs and, 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 and tax revenues, as well as household, household impact. So, I will not go into the theoretical explanation of, of what is direct impact, indirect impact, and induced impact. I'd just like to provide some numbers, and I think that they, they talk by themselves. So, if we look at every hundred thousand dollars spent, and, and, and that would apply to direct impact, we see that the indirect impact and induced impact is represented by the numbers on the, on the right side. So, if we talk about employment, and, and this is by organizations only, then we, we see that, that we are talking about two, two jobs. In resident household income, we are talking about the, the return or impact of one hundred eight point thousand point eight hundred seventy dollars. Local government revenue, five thousand nine hundred sixty dollars. State government revenue, seven thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars. And federal tax revenue, twenty point, twenty thousand nine hundred one dollars. Again, this is, this is not the total data, this is the impact of every hundred thousand dollars indirect, indirect spending. Now, if you look at the total, total data by organizations and audiences, it is slightly, slightly higher. And I will not read out, read out the data, you can, you can, I think, see it rather clearly on the, on the screen. And of course, again, And um of course, again, I I always want to emphasize that we have to, if we talk about the total economic footprint by the arts and uh arts and culture nonprofit sector, we have to, we have to look at that total impact uh that comes from organizations or organizational spending and um audience, um audience um spending. Um, do I have a few more minutes?
You can type what we have. Normally, we go for an hour is what we shoot for. And so we have three topics.
Okay. Well, I think it's it's very interesting and it 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 could be very, very, you know, irrelevant, particularly to to the impact. So in the city of Norman, the thirty-one participating nonprofit arts um and culture organizations reported that the aggregate attendance to their in-person events totaled to almost eight hundred thousand. It is lower than it was five years back. There we went over one uh one million. But again, we saw that that audience spending is 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 dropping and the attendance is also um dropping or was below the 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 previous level. So um, the um on the screen, you can see what the average spending looks like. So the typical attendee to a nonprofit arts and cultural event in Norman spent thirty-three dollars and nine cents per person, per event, as a direct result of their attendance. And here, um this amount does not include uh the cost for admission. Um, that is calculated um separately. And um you see that the food and beverages is the highest, highest expense. Um, this is uh retail shopping, um, no, this is grocery shopping, this is retail shopping. This is shopping for accessories, this is others which is not identified. Here you can see the transportation expenses, lodging expenses. And and these are uh these are the uh, these are the uh averages. Um, another in- interesting data to look at is the local versus non-local um um attendance. And you can see that the the majority of the uh of the people um attending events are local ones, uh representing seventy one percent and non-local representing twenty-nine. And here, uh important question is, does the, does the spending um between local and non-local attendees differ? And you'll see that there is um rather big difference between um local spending and non, uh non-local spending. Um, non-local um attendees spend forty-nine cents, forty uh forty uh forty-nine dollars, forty cents per person, per event. Um, and um, which means that they spent uh an average of eighty-seven percent more than local attendees. And uh perhaps this uh this may be um um important um um in the context of 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 you uh joining uh the SEC um network and and also attracting more non-local uh non, non-local uh attendees also to cultural uh events, bringing also more, more revenue to um to the city. Let me quickly, I I'll skip some data. Uh, the um AEP studies um historically have focused primarily on the financial, economic and tourism um contributions of the nonprofit arts and culture industry. This was the very first time when um Americans Food Arts um included social impact or tried to gorge uh social impact. And there were, as I'll show you, there are four major um data points that 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 were, that were studied. As you can see on the screen, uh also here, when when you look at the social impact, uh I think uh the data talks uh by uh by itself. Eighty-six say that arts and culture is important to their community, communities' quality of life and livability. And seventy-nine believe that arts and culture is important um to communities, businesses, economy and local uh local jobs. Let me just um skip to the chart uh of of Anholz's uh measurement. As I said, uh here I'm uh using Simon Anho- Anholz's measurement uh approach to visually depict depict the impact of the nonprofit sector uh in 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 Norman. And um uh it it is just, just a glimpse. And you can see that the the four data points are the importance of social connections provided by uh by the nonprofit arts and culture sector, physical and emotional health or importance um of his uh physical and and emotional health, importance of community, pride and identity, community livability, um again, represented by the nonprofit arts and culture sector. And I think that they, you can see that the return um um in terms of the responses um and importance by all four uh data points is uh is very high. So um people are sharing that this uh when when evaluating um venues, they uh they evaluated that that the organizations or facilities were important pillars for uh for them within uh within the community, namely Norman. Um, they agreed that that the organizations uh provide a great sense um of loss if 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 they would disappear. Um, they also evaluated that this activity or venue is inspire inspiring sense of pride in this neighborhood or community. And lastly, um they also evaluated that their attendance um is a way of ensuring that this activity, namely activities of of specific uh cultural uh and arts organizations um is preserved for uh for future um generations. And here you can see the data already on the screen. And I will, I will end up with with this slide, I prom- I promise. I think arts volunteerism um was uh very closely tied to this uh to this project. While arts volunteers do not have an economic impact as defined uh in this study, because there are no direct expenditures attached uh to them, they do have an enormous impact on their community because their uh because their time and expertise help of arts and culture organizations function as a viable industry. And during twenty uh twenty-two, a total of two thousand six hundred two volunteers donated, a total of um eighty thousand three hundred seventy-five hours to Norman's uh thirty-one participating organizations. And this represents a donation of time with an estimated aggregate dollar value of two point two million dollars. And independent sector places the value of the average volunteer hour in uh in Oklahoma at twenty-six dollars eighty-eight cents. So with this, I will conclude. Thank you so much for your attention.
Questions from council.
I'll just say, if you will email that to me, I'll make sure that they get it.
How is this data planning to be used in the future? Uh, are you guys going for any large grants or federal funding?
All of the above. Um, this data really helps not just the Arts Council, but all of those arts organizations that participated and even those that didn't. Um, they're able to use all of these metrics when applying to grants, when looking for sponsorships. Because for every dollar that we're putting in, we're getting about two dollars back.
And also, what I didn't mention was that after the study, the Americans Food Arts provided each participating community with a calculator. So organizations uh that participate and also that didn't participate, they can utilize that calculator and see their individual impact in the community. So they would provide some specific data points. And based on that, the calculator would provide also the 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 impact uh on smaller scale um similar to what I presented today.
And then my other question is, I'm so glad that Oregon participated twice. Um, I heard there was a bit of a challenge in being the only data set for Oklahoma. And what is that, like compared to another state with maybe like fifty participants?
Well, uh why I said that that was a challenge, uh really, um it would be interesting to see how Tulsa is doing, how Oklahoma City is doing. Because uh our cohort was city of of Norman. And in previous years, uh both city of Tulsa participated, Oklahoma City participated, I believe Edmund participated. And we uh we were able to have comparative data that would be state uh representative. Right now, we have city of Norman, which may be in somewhat unique situation. It would be really great to see how uh other cities did, particularly considering the economic um crisis after uh after uh COVID nineteen. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, on the part about local spending, twenty-six dollars or so and non, non-local spending forty-nine, um would you say it's probably attributed to a local resident doesn't have to buy a hotel room? Probably doesn't eat out three times that day, maybe once, but would probably go home and eat. So you think it's mostly food and lodging that would be a reason? Or are non-locals just, do they just spend more because they do?
Uh, I think you're ma- making a good point, yes. The lodging has a big impact when calculating the uh out of uh out of city uh visitors. Because that is one of the biggest expenses when you, when you, when you travel. So I think that that definitely needs to be um addressed and calculated and yeah.
One of the absolute best points, the data points that that was the other, um other things that people spent money on, there was a farmer who attended a ve- an event and he had to pay somebody to babysit his cows. So that just kind of shows like there, there are other people that are widely impacted when somebody goes someplace to attend an event that 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 aren't typically what what we measure. So that's what that other category is.
It's pretty nice to have this type of detailed data, I think. It's really good. And it's always, like we all know, it's a really good thing for Norman and has been, so.
And I think um looking back at the thirty-one that that did the enti- the thirty-one organizations that participated, the reason not everybody does is because they are, the surveys are so intense. Um, I participated down at my last employer, city of Ocala, we did this. And just the city filling out their data, it it took me about three or four hours.
And I would like to say that that everyone really, uh all forty-nines uh with which I worked, they were very enthusiastic about the study, but that was the major challenge, time. And to fill out they they rather lengthy and and scrupulous uh survey that that they had to, so.
Well, thank you very much for a very thorough presentation. Next item on the agenda, the the emergency shelter, I guess it's Anthony Purit.
Do you want me to come?
He's well versed in this.
Thank you.
He does this so easily.
That'll take me five minutes. All right. So, emergency shelter update. Um, good news, uh to report back, we're really excited uh to bring you guys up to speed on our progress. Um, I think, you know, last time we spoke with you, we were um hopeful that we would have another operator to bring to you the next time we saw you, and we do. Um, and that operator is City Care Inc. out of Oklahoma City. Uh, and we do have someone from City Care with us tonight, Sean, uh Director of Homeless Services, is that your time?
Senior Director, yeah. Sort of the same thing, but it it just means you're old.
And and so we're uh grateful that Sean can be here tonight, uh and he's available for questions as well. But um we're really, really, really excited uh to bring City Care as the new contractor for the city's overnight shelter. Um, you know, since two thousand one, they have operated a low-barrier permanent shelter in Oklahoma City. Um, before that, I mean, they were doing day services for the population. Uh, they, you know, operate a one hundred and twelve unit uh permanent supportive housing endeavor. And that's right next door to where they have their shelter. And um as we all know, it is not easy to get community support for um these types of projects. And they have uh, they've done a fantastic job. Um, and for the city of Norman, who is a community looking to add, you know, permanent supportive housing, you know, just having, you know, now a provider who is a, we can call and ask for their input is a a great service just in and of itself. But I I think the biggest thing is the City Care model is the model that we have been trying to emulate as we have been, you know, iterating our shelter. Um, and you know, we, I think towards City Care, we adopted their models. April with Food and Shelter went there, adopted a lot of their model. Um, and we have tried uh to emulate that model as we have moved forward. Um, so now the fact that we can actually have the agency who we've been trying to emulate, i- it it's a very wonderful opportunity. I'm very grateful that we can bring this to you guys. Um, and I think, and this is the thing that's blown us away as staff, the biggest thing that they bring to the table is their expertise in housing case management and sort of support services. And they are the experts, as they have said, in getting people housed. And just some of the initiatives that they've been doing recently and just the way that they have approached it is is it's very refreshing. Um, for example, the first thing that I think they asked us whenever we approached them about operating the shelters is what kind of services and what kind of um, you know, housing options do you have in your community? Are we going to be spinning our wheels? Are we going to actually be able to get people housed? That's what they said. And I mean, to me, like the biggest green flag you've ever seen. So really grateful for, you know, their approach and everything that they've done so far. So, I mean, like I said, really grateful. Uh, and so what we're going to do is we're going to be uh bringing to council at the next agenda, uh, you know, in agreement with City Care. It is functionally pretty much the same, the contract itself, other than maybe like the term, uh than what you've seen in the draft that we have been trying to reach of the contract we've been trying to reach with Food and Shelter. So again, it's a reimbursement contract, similar, you know, functions of the co- uh contract itself. I mean, the scope of services did have to change just because we're changing providers and they have a different way of running things. Uh, you know, for the period, we did do, um, uh, we're hoping for an operations period in the contract, January fifteenth to the end of the fiscal year. So that's when the transition would take place. Obviously, there are going to be boots on the ground before that for them to be able to be operational January fifteenth. So, and that also gives us the uh time to give contract notice to Food and Shelter. And there can be, you know, seamless transition. I know that council has been very concerned about, you know, there being a good transition between the two operators without any downtime in order for us to stop that service in the middle of winter. Um, and then again, we're also going to suggest small improvements to the facility based on City Care's feedback and how they're operating. Um, a lot of the stuff was a, why didn't we think of that? Uh, for example, defibrillators, uh, you know, they requested a, you know, walkthrough metal detector. That's something that they've had at their shelter. We have one, we're not going to have to pay for the actual, it's just the installation of it. Um, again, a dedicated office space for case management specifically, especially when you're handling sensitive information and privacy, you have to have that space in order to provide that service. Um, some fencing, I think this is something that the city has probably wanted uh to begin with. And I think this would um probably be good just given the area of it anyway. And I think that it allows them, it it would, I probably would shift the intake area to a different part of the building. Uh, camera systems for security, it's important to note, we actually had camera systems for a time. Uh, the transit center was going to have um a camera system. Well, the transit center wasn't ready to open, but we had the cameras. Well, so we put them temporarily at the shelter until they were ready to be utilized at the transit center. So again, great idea, but it also shows that whatever we put here, we can also transition later, uh, you know, at no cost to the permanent shelter. Uh, and then air purification, similar to big space machine on the wall. Uh, you know, this is something that they identified that, you know, it's a really great investment and it's again, one that can transfer with us as we grow. So again, a lot of these things are quality of life, but they're also, a lot of them are basic safety features that are pretty necessary and they're pretty minimal. And again, we try to keep it to what we can move with this.
What fencing are you talking about?
There'd be a stockade fence um in the parking lot area on the side that faces James Garner. Uh, I I think that's where we're, we're thinking about putting it and that would be an intake area. And then that would help, I think, as well. Um, and that's kind of similar to the facility that they have laid out in Oklahoma City.
Our uh facilities folks have met and and will continue work closely with the folks at City Care. And uh a lot of that work will be doing city staff.
So, those are some minor improvements that, you know, we think are, you know, sorely needed. The building, we'll be honest, it was never intended for this purpose, that's pretty clear. So, in order to just make it a little bit more livable, we're also going to be adding, for example, a bathroom. And I think you've heard from the current operator, April, you know, that is something they sorely need, getting, you know, forty-four men and have one single bathroom for them in the morning, that's difficult, so. And could do it for pretty cheaply, so we're pretty excited about that. And again, improvements will be transferable for the most part. So, here's the budget that we have. And so, for comparison, our previous monthly budget was around fifty-four thousand dollars a month with Food and Shelter, that was a flat fee, so we'd be paying that regardless. Again, this is a reimbursement contract, so this is, you know, not necessarily set in stone, it's reimbursement for actual expenses. I think that, and again, it, it did have gone up, it is sixty-two thousand. I think, again, it's a level of service provision that we will be getting. And also, this is, I think, probably the biggest part of it for me. And kind of going back to Councilmember Ball, something that you mentioned at some of the previous meetings, you know, a focus more on intentionality of service provision, and again, thankful for having experts and housing people, they have added two positions in this budget for housing case management. And their Housing Navigator is what they call them. And having that is something we didn't have before. And that would provide, again, in, in terms of the impact of each dollar you spend, that's going to have the highest impact, I think, regardless. And, you know, Heidi, correct me if I'm wrong, but the addition of housing case managers or case managers in general, was it a need that the community is sorely facing?
We do not currently have anybody who's working with the street homeless population that can even do an assessment. This is vital.
Vital. So, and again, I think once you take that cost out, it's about the same. So, again, in terms of impact, if there's any expense you could add to the current amount, this is the one that will give you the most bang for your buck.
Really encouraged by that last part. I think that's the, that's the key to all of this, is case management, so thankful for that. Do these costs include security?
Yes, they do. I will note that the security is going to look a little different than what we've done in the past, but again, we're relying on the contractor and their regard. They do want security there. And I think that, you know, the way that the city had run the shelter is, we would have security there all night without staff there. And like, staff would be there for intake, security would be there a one-hundred percent of the time. It is flipped. Security is there during intake, staff is there one-hundred percent of the time when people are asleep, it is staff only. But the security at the intake portion of it is the most helpful. And, and that's kind of the feedback that they got, and, you know, again, they've been operating it since two thousand and twenty-one very successfully. And we're more than comfortable with that approach.
And then the HMIS, all of the paperwork, that's not a stranger to the folks at City Care. So we'll gain an understanding relatively quickly of what usual and customary reporting will look like under the City Care model. And, I mean, I, I don't really have any predetermined expectations. We'd love to know what is possible with the data that you gather and how you track your outcomes and measure success.
I have a question about the Housing Navigator positions. In the last oversight meeting, we saw that people did not leave the shelter for lack of housing options. Is this Housing Case Management all Section Eight, or is it looking at a variety of options for housing?
I'll defer to Sean on that, you could probably provide a better description, but the position posting you provided was pretty inclusive.
Yeah, that's a great question. Theoretically, they would look for every option there is for housing. And so, I can tell you, like, sometimes in Oklahoma City, you know, OCHA will be shut down voucher-wise, or as a state, OFA will be shut down. We have found quite a bit of success, like, walking people into public housing units and some of the other options as well. And so, their, their job is mainly to focus on every housing option and every dollar available to see if we can get somebody over that threshold of leaving shelter and moving into sustainable, stable housing. And then, there would be just a short time of case management there before their focus is really back on to shelter population. So, the hard part is, is this isn't going to answer the problem of long-term case management, right? Which is, which is something that, that every provider really needs. But this will provide some case management to help people step over that threshold and, and start moving forward.
Okay, I would say in the last oversight meeting, we saw that there were some people staying at the current shelter that earned about a thousand dollars a month, which is not quite enough if it's seven, eight, nine hundred dollars for rent. So, when you're looking for like every dollar, what does that look like for somebody who is earning an income or, you know, working a part-time job at, say, Sprouts or something? How are, how do they get housed?
That's a good question. I think we have to back up a little bit. And I think City Care as an organization is going to have to come in and learn where every dollar is in this city. Because, quite frankly, this is a new city, and so, there are some things we're going to have to learn from Heidi and some of the people who are here so that we can, so that we can start to recognize where those dollars are. That could look like job coaching, that could look like getting somebody involved in a job placement program, or what it takes to get them to actually move into more gainful employment. And then we can possibly start to work more into housing offices. It could look like having two people who function right at that thousand-dollar level and possibly getting them to team up as a household in HMIS, and then move into a unit that would sustain both people. I mean, it, it could look like hundreds of different things.
I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Have you visited our Food and Shelter down here recently, sir?
I have met with April quite a few times.
Have you actually been down there to see the property, either one of the properties?
I have seen the shelter property multiple times. I've seen it with, with April and with the city. And I've, I've met with April many times virtually and in person, but I have not stood on the Food and Shelter.
Okay. Because that property right now is, in, in this property here, i- if you look outside, if you look at the surrounding area, it's, it's bad.
Yeah.
When I drove by today, there was, I counted twenty tents outside, and it, that's not what we're talking about, when we're talking about getting people into some kind of shelter, correct?
Right, yeah.
So, so how, how would you suggest we address that, from your standpoint?
That's a good question.
That's one of my biggest issues. A lot of this is pouring over into our parks, it's pouring over into private properties, our businesses.
Yeah.
And people are, it's not just our businesses and people that live here are suffering, it's, it's these people that are suffering. I mean, the conditions out there are horrendous. I, I went for a walk-through, I invited many of the people here to go with me, nobody showed up. I'm going to go again this week, so if anybody would like to attend me, I talked to five or six individuals. There's a major mental health crisis going on in our community.
In all of our communities, yes.
Exactly. So when it comes to the case management, I, I'm a hundred percent with you. But when it comes to the actual shelter, you said a key word, as we grow. And I think that is the wrong mindset to have, because this isn't a problem that we want to grow. We're not trying to create more shelters, or more people that need help. So the case management, I'm all for, but when it comes to the actual shelter, especially the low-barrier shelter, there's better ways we can do it. But, but I'd love to have to, I'd love to talk to you more about, about this, and I'd love to come see what y'all have going on.
Man, I would love for you to. I'm available for coffee, to hang out, whatever you want to do. Also, to answer your question.
Because I'd love to see how it's working down there, because we have a lot of these private housing, you know, these small communities, small houses, and they're next to these shelters. Man, like I said, when I walked by just a few days ago, there's a lot of crime, there's a lot of overflow that's going up. So I'd love to come see how you guys are handling it and how you're keeping the citizens there safe, the surrounding community safe, and everything that you're doing, so. Yeah, I'd love to schedule.
Some things are going really good, some things aren't. Right now, as a city, we're working on camp decommissions. And so, we're, we're physically sending our outreach teams into the camps, and we're decommissioning straight from camp into housing. And so, but the problem is, is, is not just the shelter or the amount of case managers. It's, it's the amount of affordable housing we have in this state. And so the problem is actually lying in affordable housing before we can even touch moving people.
And I'm very proud of what we've done here. We're about to open a new facility, those Crimson is groundbreaking in January. We can always use more affordable housing, we can always use more Section Eight, we can always use, you know, our people can use more help.
You guys are doing a great job, and, and that's in the community and, and as a city. Because I can tell you right now, there's no other situation we've walked into where a city was so willing to step right in and fund a shelter system. And so, because of how invested you guys are as a community, that's one of the reasons we were willing to walk into this.
Thanks, sir.
Another thing I wanted to hit on as well, you mentioned Crimson Flats, which is the city's affordable housing project utilizing ARPA dollars. We're approaching the end of the, the year and the deadline in order to expand all of our ARPA dollars. And there's about a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars left over in the Affordable Housing Budget. And, and I would recommend using that and obligating it towards this contract before the end of the year, during the next session, so that we can expend it in accordance with Treasury rules, and it also, it fits in the purpose, Affordable Housing, it's in that same vein. And I think that would be a great use to use those excess funds.
Federal fiscal or Oklahoma fiscal?
I'm sorry, federal ARPA.
Federal ARPA, so I go to October?
October.
Doesn't a year change in October, September and October?
The deadline to obligate ARPA funds is December thirty-first. It's, it's a specific date, you know, yeah. This year, yeah, so.
So that twenty thousand we saw in improvements that could transfer, that would come out of the hundred and nineteen?
It would, it would, yeah, it would come out of the general amount, and I guess it's going to be like a blend of two different, like, general fund and then also a little bit of ARPA, so it could come out of.
Are there strings attached to the ARPA, like you can't pay for labor, but you can pay for site improvements?
The kind of ARPA funding that we would be utilizing would be revenue loss, is how we would indicate it. Revenue loss from the federal guidelines, has the least amount of strings attached to it. There's very, and essentially what that is meant for is provision of government services, right? And so, because we're already using, and we would have used, general fund, and this is something that the city has historically done, this is going to be ineligible use, it is a very broad category, and it is very permissive in terms of the regulatory framework around revenue loss.
Well, I'm really supportive of using that pot of money so that we don't dip too much into the general fund.
Is there any disagreement with that?
No disagreement with that, but I do want to ask, so when we, the city first operated the overnight shelter in the old library and then on Comanche, if I recall, we did receive, or we used some outside funding, I can't remember if it was a specific grant, where it came from, I think it was federal funding. But we were able to, I think the first two years, we paid for the shelter with outside funds and then had to start paying for it out of the general fund. I don't know, you guys want to go back and?
I think ESG?
Yeah.
It was not, it was SVSC funding. It was actually general funds that are committed to nonprofits. So the first years that the shelter was operated, those were SVSC funds, so it's always been city money. Until it was COVID money, when it was a Comanche shelter.
So we had some outside funding that we used, and so are there others?
CARES Act, I think was the name of that first budget.
That's what I was trying to think of, CARES Act. Are there other sources of funding that we can pursue for this, this service? Federal grants or programs, national nonprofits, I don't know. Anywhere where we can recoup the full cost of it, or half of it, or any of it, I think would be helpful, but are there those options and can we pursue them if there are?
You know, I'm not Lisa Craig, so I'm not the expert, but I, I think probably what that would end up looking like would be more so, we get that sort of funding and from like head, and it could probably be used for a, a service like this. But, you know, it's probably a part of our general allocation that we're already getting. So we would probably have to pull source it, like, funding from another project in order to supplement this one, so it wouldn't really necessarily change. But, I mean, I, I think that, you know, Lisa specifically is really great about finding funding opportunities. And I know she's been involved at the get-go, so i- if she hasn't found anything, I don't know if it would be anything. And I think that any of the funding we are, would get is probably something we're already getting, but.
So, Councilmember Holman, out, kind of along that line, we are preparing to bring council a, a, a progress report. And we're nearing completion of the effort to bring back our litter removal crew. And that's one of the two vans council had purchased that will be assigned to this task. In that, while we were having those conversations with that service provider, what occurred to us is we received a communication on opioid settlement. And part of the population that will be engaged through that effort will be individuals dealing with opioid dependency. And we were able to tailor the program to make it fit, to take full advantage of those opioid settlement dollars. And they'll come in for thirteen years, something like that. And our, our, our goal is, how do we take advantage, put those dollars towards their intended purpose, provide a new program that, that is not attached to the general fund? And then hopefully the group of people thirteen years from now sitting around the table will have access to another funding source. So, it is interesting that over time, our eyes are always wide open, looking for a connection to who, who knew we'd wound up with an opioid settlement, you know, a few years ago, and now, now it's here, so. We'll stay on that pursuit. The CDBG entitlement money that comes our way, about a million dollars a year, and our ability as part of the budget development process to work with Lisa and make sure council understands what your previous priorities have been, as the folks at City Care indicated, man, affordable housing is a big piece of the puzzle. And you, you, you may weigh how much you're investing in affordable housing versus how much you're investing in care for those in immediate need, and I, I don't know if there's any room to balance between the two, but we'll make sure that's a, a, a very upfront conversation with council so you can reaffirm your priorities.
Yeah, any, any shelter-type grants, anything out there would be helpful. And, let's see.
So, if I may add also, I, so I constantly am looking at discretionary grant funding opportunities, literally on a daily basis. So I think, together with City Care and then their history and background and knowledge of the different funding sources that they bring to the table in Oklahoma City, I think we can try to leverage this as we move forward and try to reduce that strain on the, the city budget itself. So that's exactly what the plan is as we move forward.
And does City Care have, I mean, so, operating in Oklahoma City, but are you, do you have any experience or knowledge of other communities in the metro area or statewide that have shelters, don't have shelters? What that, what that experience is depending on, you know, Tulsa and Oklahoma City have shelters, we have one, but a lot of other metro cities don't, but do still have issues? And how, I don't know, in your experience, how do they deal with that, or?
That's, that's.
How are we dealing with it?
That's a pretty good question. We are aware of communities that do and don't have shelters. The shelter systems actually communicate quite well in our state, which is why I had a relationship with April at Food and Shelter. We do, we do look at numbers statewide, we look at national numbers, we look at national programs. We also have a development department that is looking for those funding sources you were talking about. I mean, that's what they spend all of their days year-round on, is looking for funding sources. And we are quite aware of what other cities are doing because of that communication. I set personally in, on a, in a, in a national coalition around homelessness. I also set in a statewide coalition around homelessness, and so, we are at the table for those discussions.
And, I mean, in your experience, is it, with not having a shelter, would that improve our situation with visible homeless on the streets of Norman?
Absolutely not.
Would not having a shelter help us get people into housing faster?
I don't believe so.
In your experience, I would say.
Yeah, in, in my experience, I don't believe so, but I also don't believe that the answer to every problem is build more shelter.
Right.
Right? I, I think, I think the answer to the problem is low-income affordable housing and enough shelter for people to funnel down into so that we can help distribute them into some of that affordable housing. And obviously, outreach efforts that are going out and meeting people where they're at, because, you know, there's, there's a lot of trauma there. There's a lot of things, mental health stuff, that, that some people, they can't physically go into a room full of beds and lay there. And so I think, I think the efforts need to spread as well as centralize. So, good coordination, always, outreach and shelters, and that would be daytime options and nighttime options. But the answer isn't build a, you know, ten thousand. But the answer isn't build a, you know, ten thousand person shelter.
So our city, just overall, our city population continues to grow, the metro area continues to grow. And so, yeah, I don't, I don't think we could ever build enough shelter to keep up or try to stop it.
Right.
And I do agree, I, I think, I mean, the best way to help reduce homelessness would be to, for people not to become homeless in the first place, right? If, if it's because of affordable housing, they're either losing their current housing, or they can't find additional housing. If they do lose their current housing, somebody buys the apartment complex and raises the rent, now they gotta move.
Right.
Can they find somewhere else in Norman? And if they can't, and they have to move to Noble, do they then have to commute to Norman or somewhere?
And we need to look at mental and physical health, like, are they mentally and physically capable of making decisions and choices? And are they living with disability? Do we need to look at options for vouchers or case management to, you know, help people sustain when they do get into housing?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember, I have an answer to your question about how much Lisa and her crew bring in. CDBG, nine hundred and forty one thousand, six hundred and fifty nine dollars. Home, which I assume is home ARPA, three hundred and ninety million, excuse me, three hundred and ninety thousand, sixty five. CARES Act, one million, eight hundred and eighty two, two fifty six. Home ARPA, one million, five sixty, nine oh eight. And the leveraged money that we used on, for that Crimson Flats will total up to fourteen point five million dollars. So they, they do a tremendous job screening them, yes, ma'am.
I was just gonna ask, are you familiar with our home-based study and action plan and the goals that are kind of outlined?
I am not.
It just said, like, in twenty twenty-three, we're supposed to have a twenty-four seven permanent shelter, and that's where we're hoping to end up eventually. But it's one part of the puzzle, some of the other parts of the puzzle are effective communication of our limited resources. So it sounds like you're sitting on various coalitions, would appreciate everybody talking. I'm kind of curious about, I know affordable housing is a missing portion, but also what about assisted living? When we talk about people who have disabilities or mental health issues. I know permanent supportive housing isn't technically permanent, but, you know.
It can be.
Oh, it can be?
Yeah, permanent support housing could be permanent, I mean, you know, as long as everything's in place and they're participating with case management. And I mean, it could be as long as it needs to be. It, it would really come down to what the program rules were for each individualized program. But in some of our permanent supportive housing units, we've had people there for many years. We did used operate as transitional housing, but since that time, we've had people who've been with us the entire time, since we went into permanent supportive housing. And as you, as you spoke a little bit, you said maybe like long-term care facilities and some of those things. I think what's important right now with that is that we would have a disability funding source in place. You know, so hopefully like a source certified case manager or housing navigator could get those disability services put there before they went into assisted living. Sometimes hospitals can get those, those items pushed through, and they can actually get somebody functioning on short-term or long-term disability faster than like what we could at a shelter. And so getting those funding sources in place and then helping that person into assisted living, I think would be the answer to some of those. It, it's not the end all answer, I wish I had the end all answers for everything.
It's gonna be a blend of things.
Yeah, it is.
Last, what is the minimum contract time limit that you would accept? Because we was going case, we were going month to month, and I understand, you know, coming in for one month and us canceling the contract might not be something you guys would want to do.
Right.
But I also don't want to get the city on the hook for a year-long contract.
It's a six-month contract. Yeah, it, it runs from kind of mid-January until almost July. And so, and, and that, as we talk through that contractually, that gives us a way to spend enough time working with you guys to where you can see our value, and it gives us enough time to work with, with you, so we can see your value as well. Because we don't want to get on the hook for a year-long contract either of something that's not gonna work for us as an organization.
It, it sort of takes quite a while just to learn the community, like you said, because our, our problems are as varied as people out there.
Right.
But very little of it is single moms losing their house with kids, and that's not utilized in our shelter.
Right.
We have a very large transient population.
Yeah.
And that's one of my biggest concerns with building a permanent shelter, because it looks to me that they attract these populations that, it's, it's the mental health issues.
Yeah.
And the crime issues, and so, but again, regardless of where it goes, I would love to work with you more, I'd love to come see what you guys are doing up there.
Yeah.
And how y'all are tackling it from y'all's point of view, so.
Yeah, when, when this is over, man, get with me, we'll set something up. Also, I think.
If you'd like to walk with me down here and come visit some of these parks and come down into the shelter and visit the people that we're actually talking about.
Yeah.
I, I'd love to have you come with me.
Yeah, I can do that. A- as you said, that kind of attracts that population, I think, I think in reality, wouldn't we want to attract people to services rather than them?
But then we gotta provide those services.
In crannies and us not know.
But then we have to actually provide those services, not allow them just being a tin out of a thunderstorm and committing suicide with a needle. So it's, yeah, the attraction word, I'm not, I'm not, we'll, we'll talk about that one more.
Right, I, I don't have all the answers.
Neither do I.
So what I do know is that we do this very well.
Good.
And we pride ourselves on it. And we believe in dignity for all people. And so I, I know that we'll give it our best shot, and the hope is that we go through this six months and, and by the end of it, we contract something longer. And, and if it's not right for you or it's not right for us at the end of that six months, then, then we'll move on.
Appreciate your time, sir.
And, and your honor, the timing of these conversations in this six-month initial contract just happens to be taking place during the budget development process. And council can take appropriate measures before June thirty and budget adoption.
Would, would you say are your, the services that you're providing and the number of people you're providing services to at your other shelters, does it continue to grow? Is it leveling out, are you?
That is such a good question, and, and the reason for that is, is because our night shelter, there's only a hundred and forty beds, right? And, and so four units are devoted to families, and that takes up sixteen of the beds. So we've got twenty-eight women and ninety-six males every single day. We go over, we have some mats in the floor in the hallways, but the number of people we see is brought down and centralized to a set number every single day. And so it's hard to determine if the number of people who need services are going up or not without doing a point in time count, which you guys do also. Our point in time count this last time was quite a bit higher than it had been the previous years. And so with that, I can say more people are needing services in Oklahoma City. But I can't directly answer your question because we have a smaller population of that group. So that's, that's a hard ask for me, or, or a hard answer.
No, that's fine. What's kind of the typical public-private slash nonprofit, like, contribution to your own's budget in other shelters?
Okay.
Like, city funds being one, and then outside agencies being the other?
So I won't have an exact percentage, I can tell you our city funds aren't great. We do receive some city funds, but our operating budget is about one point two million dollars a year for our overnight shelter. And that's mostly raised by our development team.
That was gonna be my next question was kind of, do you have somebody that raises money for you? I know here in Norman, we have a new old executive director for United Way who's phenomenal.
We are direct recipients of United Way.
Okay. And I think that's all I had.
Sean, do you know the average duration of an individual that stays at the shelter in Oklahoma City?
Man, I, you know, you know, if I had the answer to that question, I would probably be a wealthy man. Because that, that is so hard to answer, because we've got some people who have been in, accessing our shelter for two years straight. That qualify for housing, that receive disability, that, that we can't physically get over that threshold, you know, there's just some of those individuals. And then we've got people who, depending on if they're chronic or not, if they're chronic, there's more avenues with HUD to push somebody in housing. But that guarantees that they had to have experienced unsheltered homelessness or sheltered homelessness for twelve months, right? And so, which automatically makes that number bad, right? Because we know that this person has been homeless four times, and they're continued to experience, and now they've met that twelve-month threshold. So for individuals that might be displaced, you know, we're actually developing some diversion systems right now in Oklahoma City. And, and they access our shelter for a month, month and a half sometimes, but it's usually about a three to six week system. I can tell you number-wise for us, forty-seven percent of our people are only with us for five days or less. So forty-seven percent of our people are there for a short amount of time, and then as that amount of time goes up, the numbers come down on the percentage of people in our shelter on a daily basis.
Makes sense.
The county's looking into diversion, I guess it is, inside of Oklahoma City, and I don't know what they've answered on that, but they're trying to make a partnership that works.
Divergent Hub's great, it's, I think their main focus is usually people that are justice involved. But we actually have embedded workers at Divergent Hub and a really good partnership with them as well.
Yes, sir. I was just gonna mention that you talked about the numbers at your shelter, ninety-six men and twenty-six women.
Twenty-eight women, yes, sir.
You know, even though that shelter is more than double the size of our shelter. Our most recent report, we had thirty, thirty-six women and forty-six men. We are almost.
Fifty, fifty, almost fifty, fifty.
And total number, we, I guess, have more women than your shelter does.
Right.
And a lot fewer men, though, but, and then thirty-one to sixty-one is the vast majority of the group of people that's staying there.
I think if we had more space for women, we would have more women. Whenever we designed and built shelter, our point in time count numbers showed that men outnumbered women like two point five to one. So we just went with about a three to one breakdown on that. But since building, we've had more women access shelter than what we really thought was gonna happen. And so I don't believe in Oklahoma City, it would, it would be almost fifty-fifty like it is here, but it would still be at least two to one.
Yeah, I, I do remember a few years ago, it was more, considerably more men, and then over the last three, four years, it seemingly is at least here.
Interesting data, I think, I think a lot of programs before were geared towards women and children. And I think now we're seeing more shelter options for men than we did previously.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't count that as fact, though, I would just count that as something Sean just spewed out of his mouth.
Yes, sir.
When looking for housing opportunities for your residents, do you look outside of the city?
Yeah. Yes, with, with OFA vouchers, we do because they're statewide. Also, many times we have people who may be on voucher or are holding voucher, and they want to go back to where they're from or to an area that they had previously lived. So yes, we do look outside, but I will have to say, most of our efforts are focused in Oklahoma County. And, and that would just be because what kind of voucher system we are working on in the moment. But OFA vouchers are statewide vouchers.
And Norman's kind of small. Looking outside, even if it's just for an ex, less expensive housing, apartments and stuff, no. That's, I think that answers most of my question.
We, so one thing we'll need to learn is, we'll need to learn if there's, you know, if there's funds available, like flex funds or anything that we could use to maybe do first month's rent or down, or deposits. Or some of the things that people need help with as they're coming out of homelessness. And so we're, we're gonna have to have a period of time to where we're learning what's available here so that we can formulate, you know, if it's available. Is it only good for the city of Norman, or is it good for Cleveland County, or, and so.
So Councilmember Nash, you, you're trained to thought that, yes, we participate in the Cleveland County Continuum of Care.
Yes.
And we recognize that there are services we provide, so other communities bring their individuals to Norman. But if it's Cleveland County Continuum of Care, if there are housing options that meet the need and are most affordable outside of Norman, as long as they're in Cleveland County. That seems to make an awful lot of sense to me.
And so you, you do, you guys do help residents to get, that want to go home to wherever they came from, help them to get the transportation they need to?
That, that's a good question, that's kind of a tricky question. Because if we had something lined up, right, if we had a voucher in place and housing lined up in another city, or, or we were able to divert an individual and we get them into contact with a family member and we do a little bit of mediation, and, and that family members agree they can come. Then we might be able to look at putting together some kind of funding to help that individual get back. And that might look like us accessing one of our church partners, or one of our city partners, or one of the flex funds or systems that are in place to help people or help nonprofits kind of function in that way. But what we won't do is just, somebody comes in and says, you know, I want to go to Nantucket, and us find a way to get them to Nantucket without a plan in place. But we've helped people relocate back to Texas, we've helped people go to New Hampshire, I mean, we've helped people go all over the country.
We have, we have people from all over the country here, from Maine, Colorado, Kansas, Texas.
Yeah.
If they want to go home, I don't want to have any barriers to prevent them from going home. It's good to make sure that there's some sort of plan in place, but like I said, I don't, I don't think that we should be putting any kind of barrier to threat, prevent these people from being able to go home if that's what they're choosing to do.
Absolutely, I, I don't know, I don't know what funding sources are in place here in Norman or in Cleveland County to possibly help with a Greyhound ticket or some of those options. But that's, that's just more of the stuff we're gonna have to learn coming in the door.
I know there is a program in Norman through the nonprofits that does provide folks a bus ticket back wherever home might be.
Right.
If they desire it. So like one example, like on that same note, like as far as how folks may end up in Norman and how to get them back wherever they may have come from, if they're trying to get back there. You know, like yesterday or the day before, there was a post in the What's Up Moore Facebook, and it was a video of a man, I think he might have had nunchucks, I'm not sure. But he had his shopping cart, and he was under a bridge in Moore, and people were commenting about it. And kind of some of the thought on that was, okay, this guy gets picked up by the Moore Police Department, where are they going to take him? To the Cleveland County Jail, or to Food and Shelter in Norman, or if he gets taken to Griffin? Or if he gets taken to a mental health service, it's probably going to be in Norman.
I, I would hope that he would go to Griffin before he went to jail for just having mental health problems.
Right, yeah, exactly, and, but a concern that we have is what happens, okay? He was in North Moore, he gets brought to Griffin, when Griffin is done helping him, then what happens to that man? Is he left in Norman for us to shelter or put caseworkers on to try to help out, or? I don't think he lived under that bridge permanently, so where is he even go back to at that point, and what agency is even responsible for it? So that's some of the issue, having the county jail and having Griffin in Norman, that Griffin can have patients from all seventy-seven counties in it at any time. The county jail, we know anywhere south of Eighty-Ninth Street, anybody picked up anywhere in Cleveland County gets brought to Norman.
Yeah.
And so how we are impacted by that type of thing.
Is this is a question, is, is Griffin is Department of Mental Health, right? Are they relocating to Oklahoma City, I think I heard that?
Yes.
Okay. What is the option gonna be after that relocation?
We have Bear Rock and Central Oklahoma City Mental Health.
I know Hope is here as well, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Hope is, yes, Hope is part of the COC, they don't operate in, they don't have a physical.
Yeah, Hope is, yes, Hope is part of the COC. They don't operate in, they don't have a physical office in Norman, but they do operate in Cleveland County.
Okay.
They are a COC partner. People just usually end up having to go up into the city or they have a case manager who will come here and meet with people at the library. When the library's.
I seen Angela.
Yeah.
And I would just add to the Red Rock portion, they got the RFP for a um urgent recovery care.
Okay.
Um, so they'll be looking at that and I don't wanna jinx it, but they also seemed kind of interested in doing a sobering center co-located with that. Um, but there is the thought, what happens, again, that goes back to the coordinated um use of our limited resources.
Right.
When somebody is released and there's no warm handoff, like, so from jail, no warm handoff.
No, they're gonna, they're gonna walk out the front door and they're gonna walk to here to Moore, depending on what seems like a better option. And if they walk out of Griffin, they're gonna walk straight into Norman, like, yeah, I I would, I wish and I, I wish we had a system in place that would fix that, but for right now, it's just, that's what it is. And and I think the best thing we can do to help people start funneling into housing will probably be the best we can do for now until everybody can communicate together and we can get some kind of plan in place. You know, I I, I don't think that you can force a mental health provider to make sure somebody gets back to where they came from, unfortunately. I do know that some of the Department of Mental Health programs, um, like Grand and and some of their other ones, they transport people back. And so sometimes they transport people back um under great circumstances and sometimes they drop them off in front of our shelter.
Yeah, that's uh one of our issues. I mean, and Griffin's not a new facility in Norman, it's been here over a hundred years.
Yeah, it sure has.
And there, unless something, unless there's an update, I don't know if they've actually started the construction of that new hospital. They did a ceremonial groundbreaking last year and hasn't.
It's really expensive.
Yeah, yeah, so we're, I mean, I don't know that we have an exact mythical timeline of about when Griffin may move its its services here, but yeah, Central Oklahoma Community Health and Red Rock Behavioral Services are staying and at least one of them expanding in Norman. So that's what I think what we'll have as available after that, so.
The funding is Annie's song and is tomorrow, tomorrow.
Yeah.
It uh, it's interesting, yes, sir.
Just gonna see if somebody could provide some color to the, the delta in the per-bed cost. Fifty-two beds, seven-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, just under fourteen thousand dollars a bed. You've got a facility in Oklahoma City, it's a hundred and four beds with a one-point-two-million-dollar um budget, eighty-five-hundred dollars a bed. I'm looking at a fifty-four-hundred dollar difference per bed, per facility. I didn't know if there's a.
It, some of that might be just truly an economy of scale in terms of the number of staff per bed.
Okay.
That you, you don't necessarily have to have one staff member per X number of beds. It's, it's not, uh, it's not driven by that.
We cut our staffing in more than in half, actually, um, for the, to scale down to the size of shelter you guys have here.
And and I think that's a great transition point because I, going back to what you said, Councilmember Ball, I I think you're right. The term grow is not the correct word. I think it's, you know, better, it's as we, instead of grow, as we refine and improve our approach to this issue, which is super complex. You know, we are looking again at the Griffin property and I think that is a perfect example of how we can continue to refine. Where can we economize? Where can we increase the actual, you know, impact of our dollar? And I think, again, economy of scale is one way that you could increase the amount of efficiency that you're getting and increasing the amount of services you're providing and effectiveness that you're able to reach. Um, and also improve in terms of, you know, basic sprinkler systems um, in terms of having a, a property that is actually fit for that use. And so um, I I think at this point, it would be great. Shannon, did you wanna give the update for, cause you've been involved in that?
Yeah, no, I, it's, we continue, Daryl and I continue to meet weekly, uh, or almost weekly with our um counterparts with the Oklahoma Office of Management Enterprise Services. Um, right now, they are working on um getting that property surveyed to get it ready uh for sale, to have a legal description. Um, in the BACA meeting uh last week or the week before that, you know, we got the green light to move ahead with the uh Tiff District for that area, so I believe Catherine and her team are maybe working on that and that will come back to you soon. I think the state um OMEs would be the applicant for that. And so I think they would like to see that in place before they start to sell the property. Um, they are also in the middle of getting an appraisal, um, that's already been issued for the soccer complex in Sutton Wilderness. So um hopefully, um, just in the next two to three weeks, we should have some uh feedback on that and where we stand on um actually purchasing that property from them. And then as um we indicated, or I think maybe Councilmember Grant, maybe it was Daryl, mentioned that Red Rock will be um is looking to locate in the same area. They're looking to purchase a ten-acre parcel in that Griffin to the area. Um, and then we've had some conversations that they're very interested in maybe partnering with us on a sobering center. And that's also some of that opioid settlement funds we were looking at, the remainder, not all of those funds will be going for the other effort, but we're thinking like that could at least help sustain that a little bit, or that could go for that purpose, um, if we're able to work something out with Red Rock. But um, and so as they're building their new facility, maybe there's, that can be loca- co-located there as well. So again, as we're looking at this kind of area with all these different services, that's where, you know, we're hopefully at some point. Um, and and I know, you know, I mean, we've, clearly, we've had these conversations a lot, that there's no ideal location. And so, um, but as far as like being able to access other services and other things, you know, that things seem to kind of maybe you know, fingers crossed, coming together to some degree.
Um, and I thought on Councilmember Dixon's uh train of thought that uh in coordination with Sean and City Care's uh data gathering, our ability to recognize the Cleveland County Continuum of Care with the lion's share of these expenses borne by the city of Norman, uh, to be able to identify who brought you. And if other communities in Cleveland County continue to bring homeless individuals to Norman for services, they need to get a bill. And they need to pay a proportionate share of the cost of operation. Uh, and we do know other communities bring their homeless individuals to Norman for service because they're all members of the Continuum of Care, which is great if we're all paying proportionate per capita contribution. At this point, that math problem, we know what it costs per bed divided by days. And if you bring an individual, when Sean says check in, he was here for twenty-six days, here's your bill. We need to move to a model like that and make sure Norman taxpayers aren't covering the cost of Cleveland County.
One hundred percent. The jail knows it.
Yep, yeah, they do.
Again, to piggyback, cause I wanna really hit on this point and also remind you guys that when we brought you um a renovation to, you know, the current location, there was a, you know, I think council at one point wanted to explore that option. You know, keep in mind, economy of scope, we were able to double the actual service being provided at the shelter for the same price, because that is what, and I think again, this, hopefully, this is, you know, music to some people's ears when we say that this is not a permanent location, because we were constrained by this location, right? This, the, the location itself is hindering us in a certain aspect to be able to provide the service, right? For example, you have to pay someone in order to do fire watch because there's no sprinklers, right? That's inefficient. Um, and that is because of the space. The capacity of the beds is constrained by the actual fire safety of the building and the layout, right? So um, I I think that in a way, if there is a, you know, per-bed expenditure and that is a not a great reflection on the shelter, I I would say it's a not a great reflection on the space that we're in. And, you know, a reflection that we need to, um, you know, again, find that permanent location, which we've trying to do for the longest time and hopefully we see the light at the end of the tunnel. Um, so moving forward, next steps, I I think that these are pretty clear. Um, you know, the, like I mentioned, the contract with City Care will be on the agenda the next regular council meeting for consideration of council. Um, at the same time, we will bring a termination resolution for the contract with Food and Shelter that will be timed in order to make sure there is a seamless transition. Um, and there is no interruption in uh shelter provision. And then also upon approving a funding and contract approval, city staff will begin the process of retrofitting. Um, again, those transferable updates to the current shelter space, quality of life and health and safety stuff. Uh, and then also, uh, like Daryl mentioned, continued shelter operations will be included in the budget discussions for council to consider um for next fiscal year as well. So that will be an ongoing discussion um as we move through the winter season. Um, and then without, if there are any further questions, I know you guys have a lot, if there's any remaining questions.
I guess, I don't mean, I'm still adamant about the idea of moving out of this shelter down here by March thirty-first. Cause that's what we've promised the business community, we keep on slipping that.
Yeah.
And I don't have enough hide left to give to, to the community. And so I, I know that complicates the, the problem, but I'm willing to work on those complications to get them done. Whatever it takes.
And and keep in mind, this contract, you know, easily transferable to a location or, you know, if we can do something like that, you know, that's not the hard part, luckily.
It's that, moving Lamont School, doing all ki- it, nothing's easy, it's not. Any other questions from council or statements? Thank you, sir. Item number three, I suggest that we uh postpone this until pre-council meeting on eleven-twenty-six, five P M. Is that upgradable to all council?
Motion, second. Is there anything else I get nothing to mention?
Yeah, a couple of things, yeah, the C I B budget's probably thirty minutes in total.
Wasn't there something last week we were saying we were moving to that?
Um, up to the twenty-six, there's um.
Not that I.
It's, it's in January.
Yeah, it, it just wasn't enough for us.
Okay, yep.
Well, I guess we are adjourned.